To call to order the regular meeting of the Village Board of March 4th, 2025. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Markwart.
Here.
Trustee Takaoka.
Here.
Trustee Schenk.
That's true.
Trustee Schenk.
Share.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
Trustee Cook.
Here.
President Byrne.
Here.
Okay, is there a motion to appoint a chairman pro tem for this evening's board meeting?
I'm here.
I'd like to nominate Trustee Cook to be chairman of the board meeting for the duration of the meeting.
A second.
Motion and a second roll call, please.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Okay, we are called to order. Would everyone please stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Since we've got such a large crowd tonight, the next thing is citizens wishing to address the board. Anybody want to? Okay. All right, then we'll get to the investment stuff and that, but that's all going to come under budget and everything, right? So.
Yeah, investment reports just included your package.
Yeah, okay, thanks. Chief of Police, St. Baldry's event?
Thank you, yes. Just wanted to give a shout out. We've got several volunteers from the police department that are going to be participating in this year's St. Baldry's fundraiser for children's cancer Saturday, March 22nd at 12 o'clock at Hawthorne Mall. It's a great event to come out to, support a great cause, and I think we've got five or six of us signed up. I'll be there losing my lovely locks for a great cause. And this year in particular, we have a special motivation. Many of you heard about Officer Lilly. Lilly came and spent a day with us, a junior officer for a day. She's dealing with a pretty significant disease and really lifted our hearts when we got to spend a day with her. So she's going to be there and cheering us on, and we think it's a great thing for the community to know about. There's a website, I think in the previous slide, that anyone in the community is welcome to click on St. Baldry's, look at the Hawthorne event, and they are happy to donate to our team for supporting this cause. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Okay, anybody else on staff have a speaking part?
Saving it for later.
Saving it for later, yeah, for in committee. All right, then, next item is the omnibus vote agenda. Is there a motion to approve items A through F? Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion a second. Any comments or questions about anything? Then, hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Chairman pro tem Cook.
Aye, motion carries. We have no unfinished business, no new business, any communications.
Yeah, I have something that someone brought to my attention today. Chief Kreese, Hawthorne Parkway in Indianwood, in the morning, someone I know who lives there, and he brought this up to me probably a month ago, but then I said, send me an email so I could forward it, but then I just said, just text it to me. He goes, people keep running that stop sign constantly early in the morning during school. If maybe, he just said, if you could just make mention, maybe just keep your eyes open during the morning, because, and he said, someone's going to get hit one day, because it's an ongoing concern. And it's someone who lives right there, and they see it every day.
Great.
So I just wanted to bring that up.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other communications or anything anybody wishes to share? Okay, then are we ready to adjourn and go to committee of the whole? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting and go to committee of the whole?
I move to adjourn to go to committee of the whole.
Second. Motion a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, we're adjourned to committee of the whole.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the March 4th, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Takaoka.
Here.
Trustee Schenk.
Here.
Trustee Markwart.
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
Trustee Cook.
Here.
President Byrne.
Here.
And Trustee Forrester gave prior notice that she would not be in attendance.
Okay, is there a motion to appoint a chairman pro tem for this evening's committee meeting?
I'd like to nominate Trustee Cook to be chairman pro tem for the duration of the meeting.
Yes.
Motion and a second roll call, please.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
And Trustee Cook.
Aye. Motion carries. First item is approval of the committee of the whole meeting minutes of February 4th, 2025. Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve? Motion a second. Any comments, questions, corrections? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Epstein.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Epstein.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Chairman pro tem Cook.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, only thing on is this small item, the 2026 FY budget presentation. And who's going to start that off for us?
I'll kick us off. Good evening, everyone. This evening, we're pleased to present the draft fiscal year 2026 budget for your consideration. This covers our financial period beginning May 1st, 2025, ending April 30th, 2026. The account in line item detail for the village's budget may be found in the draft budget document that was distributed to the board on February 21st. In addition, a copy of the draft budget has also been made available for viewing on the village's website. Our plan this evening is to cover the entire village budget minus the golf fund. At our committee of the whole meeting on March 18th, we will finish with the golf fund presentation from Kemper Sports. We're then planning to have our public hearing on the proposed budget at our March 31st board meeting. Again, reminder, no village board meeting on April 1st due to the election, so we'll be having the meeting the Monday before on March 31st. We'll then be paced to have our budget for approval at our April 15th meeting, and then again, our fiscal year beginning on May 1st. Tonight's presentation will provide a high-level overview of the budget and overall village finances, focusing specifically on year-over-year changes from the fiscal '25 budget, along with new proposed budget items that add to the village's core services. Overall, the key takeaways from this evening's review is that the village's current fiscal position is strong, and we are situated for long-term fiscal health. Our current budget is balanced and includes a comfortable surplus. Our general fund reserve can sustain over a year of operations with no revenues. Our capital and vehicle and equipment replacement funds have balances that provide several years of purchasing power without new funding. Our overall village debt is low, with a majority of self-supported debt. We maintain a triple-A bond rating, the highest rating available, and of course, this is all achieved without the need to levy and collect a municipal property tax. While the village remains subject to external economic impacts, which could change our current financial position, our proper planning and financial discipline has better positioned the village to address any economic impacts without a change to everyday services or capital investment in our community.
Bring that over.
I would now like to turn things over to our finance director, Tom Lyons. This is Tom's third budget presentation with the village. Each and every year, we continue to make great improvements in not only the presentation, but the quality of our document. I'd like to thank Tom for his leadership in this process, and also like to extend my thanks to our staff and department heads for their cooperation, support in creating this. So with that, Tom, I'll turn things over to you.
Kevin, thank you. Nice recap. I think that's it, then. No, you did, covered everything pretty well there. I'm just going to get started here with a summary of our financial budget policies. Again, the main takeaway here is maintaining fiscal discipline and stewardship and continue to provide high-quality services. It's important to not only propose a balanced budget, but also define what it is. And a balanced budget in our policy says it occurs when revenues plus the beginning fund balances meet or So the next page here just summarizes some more key takeaways from our policies by category. I'm not going to go through them all, just going to highlight a couple here, but we want to use conservative but realistic estimates in our budget. We want to grow our revenues in tandem with our expenditures over time. We want to make sure funding and cash is available to fund our capital projects as pay-as-you-go, as well as our operating equipment. Looking at the minimum fund balance policy here, again, our general fund must maintain a fund balance of no less than 76% of annual recurring expenditures, plus recurring transfers out, excluding the transfers to capital. Now, what I mean by recurring transfers out, these are the ongoing subsidies to the general, or to the golf fund and the metro fund to continue those services and maintain cash positive. The other two funds we, I want to call out here, capital and VERF funds. So as you recall, last year, we did one large time funding capital transfer from the general fund to the capital and VERF funds to maintain multi-years of funding there, and the target is three years of funding of projects and This is just to recap what Kevin said. Again, we're going, the plan is to cover all departments and funds of the village except for the golf at this meeting tonight, and on March 18th, Kemper will come in to cover the golf budget. So jumping into general fund fiscal '25 projected results before we get into the budget, again, the projections are based on our best estimates to finish the current year and with the information we have now. So starting with the revenues, we're looking at sales tax top line there. We project the year to finish at 17 point, or $18.756 million. It's an increase over the budget of $456,000. Now, the sales tax until September of 2024, the sales tax revenue has been declining since their peak in fiscal '23. If that trend continued, we would have finished the year lower. However, with the recent uptick in sales tax revenue, we now project to finish the year over budget. Moving down to the food and beverage tax line, Vernon Hills continues to be a preferred location for restaurants. As the restaurant activity increases in the town, the food and beverage tax will follow. And again, we're projecting the year to finish just under $1.8 million. Next line down, income statement, or income tax, we have, the income tax is a per capita revenue, meaning the state distributes a dollar amount per person to all municipalities. The Illinois Municipal League develops projections for all per capita revenues each year and revises them throughout the year. We do use these projections to help us estimate our revenue for current year projections, as well as the next year's budget. So income tax is projected to finish the year at $4.6 million, slightly above budget. Bottom line here, the overall general fund revenues are expected to finish fiscal '25 at $37.9 million, which is $332,000 over budget.
Tom, for you, can you go back just one second?
Yes.
As we're looking at those numbers, the grocery tax goes in the top line, right? The one that's ending at the end of this year?
That's correct. The 1% grocery tax is included in the sales tax currently. I do have some comments later on that, but that would be correct.
Yeah, because I wanted to make sure, because somebody asked me about that, because food and beverage does not count grocery stuff.
That's correct.
You're going to talk about what percentage of that is grocery in terms of?
Yeah, I'll give some stats on the grocery tax and what assumptions we're assuming in the budget year, and if there's questions beyond that at that point, we can go into it further.
Okay.
That's all right?
Right, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Okay, so I just wanted to break down how we project some of these revenues. So I have an example on the screen here, the method we use to project our sales tax, for example. This is the actual sales tax data. So we have three steps here. If we start on bullet one there, the column with the percentages, we first want to look back at our revenue, sales tax revenue by month over the past multiple years, and we have, we want to identify how much per month we're receiving as percentage of the whole. So if we build that out with the average of the past five years of actual data, we can determine what percentage of the total revenue will be earned in each month. So just for an example here to call out December, we'd expect December to be one of our highest month, if not the highest, due to the holiday shopping season. And if you look at this column here, it's at 10.7%. So that is the highest of the month of the whole year. The next step, point two there in the middle box, we want to look at the receipts we do know that we have received for the first six months of the year. When we sum those up, we need to also sum up the corresponding percentage of each month that was completed. So if we're looking at known receipts for the year of 9.25 million, the corresponding percentage would be 49.32%. Now, what that means is six months through the year, or through October, we'd expect we have earned 49.32% of our revenues. So if we move to the step three there to annualize these known receipts, we look at the 9.2 million, we divide it by 42, 49%, which projects out the whole year at 18.756, which is what we used as is the projected revenue for sales tax. Now, this is a method we use for multiple revenues, but the major ones we use that for is sales tax, home real sales tax, and food and beverage tax.
How's that held up over the years?
Which?
With the projections midway through? Like, how close?
We've had one full cycle to really put it in place, and there are, the last year we worked on was, we were working with a pretty straight decline for coming off the highest year. So it's a tough look back, but I don't have the exact results on that, but it's one way, it's not just a guess or a percentage that we throw on top of a hole. We try to break it down and identify over time, and more data we have over time, too, we can apply. I think that'll help the accuracy, but I don't have this specific result look back yet.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, moving on to expenditures for the general fund. There's a few callouts here. I'll start with the first one, personnel. Project the personnel cost to finish the fiscal year '25 at $17.4 million. This is $401,000 under budget, and this is largely due to vacancies through various positions that we incur throughout the year. Move down to line two, contractual services. We project the expense to finish at $4.6 million. Again, a reduction of $428,000 over budget, and this is largely due to our legal services budget being under, and we did not use the contingency budget. And then lastly, economic incentives. We finished the year at about $5.1 million. Sales tax revenue generated by the companies that we have the sales tax rebate agreements with performed under budget. However, the overall sales tax base is still expected to grow, and that's about just under $1 million under budget there.
Can you explain the economic incentive policies?
So we have currently three active sales tax rebate agreements where we pay back a portion of the sales tax generated by those businesses when they come to town. That's usually when it's established.
And then, and then the personnel decrease, what accounts for that? It's a pretty big job.
So we have some positions that were budgeted that were unfilled.
Okay.
And then, and then we have some movement in the PD where month or two in between filling a position where someone left service. This just adds up pretty quickly, actually. So the bottom line, general fund projected fiscal year expense, $31.1 million. Overall, just under $2 million shy of the budget. To finish off the projection for the general fund, we want to look at the fund balance here. So if we focus our attention to the projected fiscal '25 column in the middle there, towards the ending fund balance, we expect to finish the year at $40.2 million. This is with the revenues over budget and the expenditures under budget, this is about $2.3 million ahead of where we anticipated to be last year, this time when we're planning the budget. That fund balance of $40.1 million, or $0.2 million provides us 122% coverage over our recurring expenditures, or about 14 and a half months. Our policy states we have to maintain a minimum of 67%, so we're well above that, and we continue to have a strong reserve. Any questions on the projection for '25 before we move into the budget? Okay, so fiscal '26 proposed budget, start off with some, just running through some major assumptions and considerations. We expect the, or in the budget, included in the budget, we have a COLA of 3.5% cost of living adjustments. That's in the budget currently, in addition to the union contract scheduled increases and raises. We use conservative economic growth estimates. We considered continued redevelopment at the mall, among other properties, and then some of the macro environment variables here. We look at inflation in a few different ways. We have a couple different metrics here. CPI, we have outlined the last four years, which has been coming off some high levels of inflation, and the average of 3% over the 10 years. We also have the employment cost index here, which, for state and local governments, which looks at employee compensation. And we have four years of data here, as well as a 10-year average. Interest rates continue to be elevated at this time. However, we do expect these to decline over the next year, and that's built into the budget. But currently, it's kind of jumping around, so we're keeping an eye on what's going on there. Also, changes in laws, example, the grocery tax, and then economic uncertainty. So just this morning, tariffs were put in place on Mexico and Canada, and as far as what we can do, there's not much we can do as far as projecting how that's going to impact our business. However, what we can do is be proactive with ensuring we have fiscal, fiscally strong policy and good reserves, which we do. We'll continue to monitor that situation, and we'll move forward, and we'll be able to manage that. This is just a personnel breakdown, budgeted personnel breakdown, full-time equivalent. So FTE is full-time equivalent. One FTE equals 2,080 hours per year here. It does a good summary to give us employee counts by department and fund. So if we look at the top box, we have full-time and part-time positions in FTE by department, and then we have a bottom line total FTEs for each fiscal year. And I want to focus on the change in FTEs from '25 to '26. So in the budget for '26, we have 102.5 FTEs. That's a reduction of 5.1 from the prior year. Now, the individual departments will go into their changes a little bit further, but I do want to call out that the dispatch fund here on this line, we anticipate about six months of operation of the dispatch fund. That's why you see that cut as we transfer services to LakeCom. And then if we focus on the bottom box, the point here is just to identify these FTE counts and how they are distributed amongst the funds. So the point here is the general fund still has a majority, a large majority of all the personnel cost, just over 93%. Okay, moving on to budgeted revenue. If we focus on the budget fiscal '26 column there in the middle, sales tax revenue projected to be over 19 million for the year. This is an increase of 4.1% over the prior budget. I'm going to break this down here on the next slide, so I'm going to move on from that for now, but I'll come back to that. Income tax is a revenue, again, distributed by the village, to the village on a per capita basis. The Illinois Municipal League estimates this revenue to be dispersed by the state at $178.27 per person. With a population of 26,850, if you multiply that by the 178, you get the one, the $4.786 million, so which is an increase of 4.3 over the prior year's budget. Moving down a few lines to license permits and fees, we do see a large commercial revenue drop from the budget a year ago. This is due to some projects not taking place, and other projects taking longer to develop than initially anticipated. Andrew is going to cover some more specifics on the larger projects later in the presentation. Last line I want to call out here is investment income, again, an increase of 38% over the prior year budget. However, we're coming off a projected fiscal '25 revenue of $2.2 million. So it's, it is, this is where the decline in interest rates is going to come into play, not necessarily the increase in budget. So total revenues in general fund then are projected to finish north of $38 million, increase $500,000 over the prior year budget, or 1.4%. So I did want to break that sales tax budget number down here a little bit. So when we budget this, this amount, we had, we started with the fiscal '25 projection, which I covered earlier in the slides, the 18.7 million. We add a conservative growth factor of half percent to get our rounded $18.8 million sales tax amount, and then we also added in some differences here from law changes, as anticipated, $250,000. Now, this particular law change basically provides that mandatory use tax collectors, they're now subject to the retailer's occupation tax, aka sales tax, at the destination rate for those sales coming from outside of Illinois. So for retailers who would, who would, who have sales to Illinois residents, and they would ship them into the state, they would have to charge a use tax. Now, the state is requiring they charge the sales tax. So this is going to affect our budget in two ways. So the use taxes that we are anticipating collecting are going to go down about 40% and about $400,000 in that case, and then we're bumping up our sales tax to recoup. Now, one could ask, why don't we just reduce use tax $400,000 and then increase our sales tax projection $400,000? Well, due to this, the implementation of this tax, we want to see how this goes and get some actual data behind this before we just assume that whatever's going to be reduced from use tax is going to show up in sales tax. So this is a conservative measure while we see how it plays out. So that's why that, that is not exactly one-for-one. But final budgeted sales tax revenue is expected to be over that 19 million there. And again, fiscal '26 budget sales tax revenue assumes the eliminated grocery tax is replaced. So effective January 1, if you recall, of 2026, the 1% grocery tax will be eliminated. Staff is currently reviewing replacement options to be provided to the board for discussion later this spring or early summer.
So you don't show what percentage of the, of the total is grocery?
So approximately, there's not a clean percentage, but it's approximately 2.2, 2.4 million, somewhere in that range of grocery tax. So it's not a small number, and that is one category in this village that's growing pretty, is growing more than any other category.
So are currently, I think it was several slides before, you don't have to go, the quarter percent was about 4 million, or home sales tax?
Yeah.
Right? And then the grocery tax is, right now, we're guessing 2.2, 2.3?
Yeah, that would be fair.
And then, can you explain the retail occupation tax, then? How does that affect us?
So the retailer occupation tax is essentially our sales tax. So what that law change is saying, in addition to the sales tax, we also have a use tax, which is basically a tax on anything that's purchased outside of the state and consumed in the state. So if it's delivered in the state, things like that. The systems haven't always been in place to have point-of-sale sales tax for the destination in another state. So a use tax, a general use tax is applied, paid to the state, and then the state disperses that to municipalities. This law is forcing those retailers, whether they're in state or whether they're out-of-state retailers, to charge that destination sales tax rate.
I mean, because they've been doing that, like, say, Amazon, for example?
Yeah.
You're paying Illinois sales tax based on your destination.
Yeah.
So you're saying there's retailers out there that are not still doing that, and now they're?
Well, it's only the, it's the retailers that were required to do a mandatory use tax. Well, it's, it's only the, it's, it's the retailers that were required to do a mandatory use tax. I, I, you know, like, cars keep coming to mind, you know, wherever you live, you fill out forms and paper ta, paperwork where the tax goes back to that county or whatnot. That's just a use tax, so. So in those situations, it's requiring those retailers to charge the actual destination sales tax of the municipality.
So you're talking about the companies that don't have a nexus in, in the state? Because those already, so if there's, Amazon already has facilities or whatever.
That's how I understand it.
Sometimes when you order from, like, out of state, say, if you order from New York, they're going to charge you Illinois sales tax.
But isn't it only if they have a location in the state?
There's, there's a lot to unpack here. Those are already taking place, like, if they have Nexus in Illinois, you know, Amazon or Wafer or whatever they're collecting, that specific destination sales tax already. These are for businesses, not necessarily in Illinois. If you go, go to Wisconsin, buy furniture, have it shipped to your house in Illinois, that's a situation where, where they might have charged use tax in the past. Now it's going to be a sales tax at your location where you live, not where you're buying it. There, there's some complexities here that I can't necessarily iron out right on the spot, but I can definitely.
Wait, one day they're going to make your gas at the gas station. They're going to say, where do you live? And they're going to charge you sales tax when you fill up in Wisconsin. No.
Perhaps. Did that give you any more context?
Thank you.
Welcome. Okay, then there's a few, a few slides and graphics that I put together here just to kind of get a better understanding of our, our makeup in town here. So since sales taxes are such an important revenue to the village, I have, I have provided a few different graphics and how we can break down industries and how these industries have impact our sales tax. So if we look at this chart, this is sales tax broken down by industry. And the larger the box, the larger impact it has on our revenue in town. So each box is defined with the, the category name or industry name. And I also tried to add in some maybe more well-known stores and retailers just for your reference and how they fall into each of these categories. CDW is obviously in that all other category, which makes up a very large portion of this. But if we move around to some of these others up in the middle top there, food, the orange box, this is essentially our grocery stores. And then there's some other small bakeries and things like that, but essentially our grocery stores. But I do want to make a point, this gives you a number, a two point two million dollars, but not all sales in a grocery store are necessarily related to groceries. And then there are also other sales at other stores, such as Target, other stores in general merchandise, where they do sell groceries. So it's not an even say, hey, this is our food, here's our grocery tax. That doesn't, that doesn't correspond exactly. So I wanted to make that point. But I thought this was just an interesting slide to kind of get the scope of, of what's, how the industries are made up in town that, that develop this tax. Oh, one other thing I just want to explain, the, a couple codes here. So these, these groups are made up by SIC codes or standard industrial classifications, which were developed decades ago to help organize companies. And then the TTM is, is trailing twelve months, if you're not aware. So every time you see a date after a TTM, that's the trailing twelve months ending with that date. So basically, year, year of data at a time.
But a couple of the places like, well, Target and Walmart, they will also generate some grocery tax too.
Absolutely. Yeah, that's my point. So you can't just look at the food category and say, oh, there's our grocery tax.
Gotcha.
That's not exactly how it works.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, this, this is a look, this is the top six industries in our town here. Just wanted to get some growth trends for you to review. And I wanted to point out, I don't, I don't have the data in every single, like, the first column on the left is, is trailing twelve months, ending four thirty, twenty twenty. So this is our best reference to, to show pre-COVID levels. And then as we move to the right, most of these are done on a March thirty-first year. And then we have, the far right is just the last twelve months ahead as of December of last year. So it gives you still some trend, trend analysis you can do here. But the food and miscellaneous retail have been the largest growing industries in the, in the town since, since COVID.
Well, when your, your bottom right box are drinking and eating places, is that, is that a combination of, like, sales tax or food and beverage or both or?
This is one hundred percent of the municipal one percent sales tax.
One percent, just our, because one of the things I was thinking was that, I, I thought you were a little conservative on the estimate in terms of the food and beverage tax and, and looking at this increase in the, the one percent, you know.
Yeah, I mean, so the food, the drinking and eating places, again, the one percent, the way to look at trends like this, it's best to use the one percent sales tax. Since that, you can basically extrapolate to retail sales
Yeah.
in your city rather than adding on other taxes. But, but yeah, you can see the dip in COVID, post-COVID, and then the rebound since post-COVID. So probably post-COVID, the drinking and eating places have really rebounded
Yeah.
with strength.
Yeah, that's good.
Yep. So one last slide here I wanted to show with the breakdown here. This, this shows the proportion each industry makes up of the sales taxes by year. And again, the industries with the largest expansion of sales in the village was led by the miscellaneous retail and the food or grocery stores. These industries are represented by the green and orange sections in the middle of the graph. Drinking and eating places experienced material growth post-COVID to present. However, the proportion of sales tax generated by industry compared to pre-COVID levels was flat. So they had a big rebound, but they also had to drop right away. So it's just a few different ways to look at how the industries are made up in our town that support this very important revenue. Does anyone have any questions on these or comments? Okay, moving on then. Moving on to expenditures in the general fund. I have five call-outs here. I'm going to start with the personnel line. We budgeted just over, well, about nineteen point one million dollars in personnel. This is an increase of one point three million over the prior year or seven point one percent. Now, as a service provider, personnel of the village is, is the largest cost each year. The proposed fiscal 26 budget includes the nineteen point one million dollars. This increase is mainly made up of the cost of living adjustments and step raises, health insurance increases, and the inclusion of the two proposed requested full-time positions. If we look at the second line, contractual services, an increase of seven hundred and twenty-seven, twenty-six thousand dollars over the prior year budget. This is substantially made up by the LakeCom services being added. So, and that's about six hundred and eighty thousand of that. Whereas that was not a cost in fiscal 25. Moving to bullet three, this is highlighting two lines here. The equipment replacement contributions are contributions or transfers from the general fund departments now to the VERF. This is the main funding source to replace vehicles and equipment when purchases are scheduled. The buildings and grounds maintenance has also increased due to the major repair and replacement contributions or transfers from the general fund buildings department to the capital fund in order to fund large facility repairs and rehabs. So the point there is that the expenditures are increasing due to these funding contributions to fund these projects. So in turn, we are going to see the capital transfers on the next slide go down. So we're just adding twenty-six expense, we're taking away transfer dollars. So now that we have identified substantially complete listing of major facility projects as well as vehicle and equipment replacements over the coming years, these contributions have been adjusted to ensure funding is available in the VERF and capital funds for these projects and replacements. The process of reorganizing the funding of these repair and replacement items to come from general fund departments has increased the general fund expenditures within each department. And you'll see that as the departments go, they're going to have a higher contribution to the, to the VERF in there. However, it has lessened the capital fund contribution from the general fund. So overall, the general fund is almost net neutral. And looking at the bottom line, or I'm sorry, item four, economic incentives. We're planning that, we're planning, the companies, we're assuming the sales tax generated by the companies with sales tax rebate agreements to increase slightly. However, still far under the prior year budget, about seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And then our debt service, line five there, we just pay debt service as it's scheduled and amortized. So principal and interest cost in fiscal 26 is about two hundred thousand more than it was in fiscal 25. Bottom line, we expect the budget to include thirty-five point six million dollars, which is a two point five percent, or two point five million dollar increase over the prior year, or seven point four percent. And again, I want to point out, when, when comparing the year to year, it's important to compare apples to apples. Currently, there are items that are included in the expenditures in the fiscal 26 budget and they're not, the same expenditures are not included in fiscal 25. These items I'm going to call out here on the next slide and walk through an adjusted comparison. So when beginning with the general fund total expenditures and adjusting for the items outlined on this slide, we arrive at adjusted general fund operating expenditures, or in other words, the apples-to-apples comparison. When we look at this comparison, the increase year-over-year is four point one percent. This four point one percent change includes the enhanced service level requests of the two proposed full-time positions and new Axon software. When isolating these items and backing them out, the true year-over-year increase is three point one percent, which then we can compare that against CPI of two point four percent. So this is a metric we want to continue to monitor over time and it will assist in managing our costs, not in one given year, but again, over time.
Tom, can I ask a question for future?
Yeah.
drafts or maybe the next meeting? On the previous slide where you had personnel, and can you like kind of break out the heavy hitters? It's, I mean, I can find it in our binders, for example, payroll, insurance, pension contributions, just like the big, and it, you can combine, in my opinion, you combine all the, you don't have to break out by department.
I do have it now.
Okay.
If you want me to run through that, I can do that.
As, not department though, just like.
No, I just, like, COLAs and step raises, X dollars, I can go through that list. Yeah?
Could you?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
So again, just to back up here, looking at expenditures, we're looking at personnel. So the first line on this, this table here, the increase of one point two seven million dollars. The substantial breakdown of that includes four hundred and eighty thousand dollars for cost of living adjustments and step raises. It's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in new money for health insurance increases. We've got two hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the two new requested full-time positions. We have a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars in the police pension contribution increase as well as an additional hundred and thirty thousand dollars for benefit time payouts related to anticipated retirements.
What percentage would you say of that nineteen million is just payroll alone, outside of pension and healthcare?
Give me just a moment here.
It, it, you know what, it's, it's okay, you can, we can do it at the next meeting.
Okay.
Just like, I'm looking to kind of see what that overall breakdown is. This is the increases, thank you.
Yep.
But like, the overall breakdown, what the, like, is personnel, is payroll, including like, you know, PTO and sick leave and all that stuff? And then the health insurance, how that figures in? And then, you know, pension contributions, anything else, big chunks that you could think of?
I do understand what you're saying and I, I think
Okay.
we're not necessarily going to go through that at the next meeting. However, I can prepare a little, a little table of slides and provide it to the board.
That's fine, just a visual, thank you.
Yep. No problem. Okay, moving on here. Okay, next slide is the general fund transfers. We're just going to start at the, the top here with the dispatch transfer. We're going to focus on the proposed budget fiscal 26 column. So the transfer for dispatch fund of two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, this is really just a placeholder as the services transition to LakeCom. This just is available to close out that fund and any obligations related to that fund. The next transfer down is transfer to capital. One million dollars is scheduled to transfer to capital to continue to fund projects and, and maintain that fund balance. As I mentioned earlier, if you look at projected fiscal 25, that, last year we had a one point eight million dollar transfer. So a lot of these expenses are now itemized in the, the general fund expenditure category rather than on this transfer, transfer list. And then the last two here, golf and metro, these are just the annual transfers to keep those two services operating at cash positive. So for the year, we're planning on about one point four million dollars in transfers, which again is down about two million dollars from the prior year budget. And then down below here, outline the one-time capital transfers from last year. If you recall, we transferred about eleven point three or eleven point four million dollars from the general fund fund balance to fund multiple years of capital and VERF equipment purchases. Okay, outstanding debt and, and credit rating. The village's credit rating is rated at triple A by S and P Global. This is the highest possible rating on a ten-levels rating scale. Again, this underscores the village's modest debt levels and strong financial positions. Below that, here we have the, each debt issuance itemized out by self-supporting debt category or debt requiring village resources. And, and just to recap quickly, the self-supporting debt is debt that was issued to fund TIF projects and other public projects within the TIF. And it's also going to be paid back with TIF increment. The bottom box there is just the village resources, so this is all paid from the general fund as we speak. And bottom line here is, we'll begin fiscal 26 with a debt balance of twenty-one point six million dollars. We'll pay down three point two million dollars in principal during the year and seven hundred thousand dollars in interest. Approximately seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars of this debt service in total will be paid by the general fund. And again, there's no, no planned bond issuances for the coming year. Okay. Lastly, just going to wrap up the general fund budget with the fund balance analysis here. So if we skip to the middle of the page there, end of fund balance at the end of the year is projected to be forty-one point two million dollars. This provides us one hundred and fifteen percent, one hundred and fifteen percent of our recurring expenditure coverage. Again, that's over twelve months of coverage. And again, the, the minimum fund balance requires sixty-seven percent. So continued were and continue to be, continue to have strong fund balance reserve in the general fund. Okay, at this point, we're going to break it down into the departments and each department's going to go over some of their changes from year to year. And I'm going to turn it over to Kevin to start administration.
Before I begin, are there any, any questions for Tom on the, just the general fund overview before we move forward? Okay. Just, so there's, there's a theme this evening and when we get into our department budgets and we're really trying to kind of reestablish for the, for the board and the community what it means as far as the village's core service. You know, what are we offering to our, to our residents and businesses on a day-to-day basis? And as we're refining the budget layout and identifying those, those one-time costs, isolating those to separate funds and keeping our general fund as our main operating fund, it's really kind of narrowing in on what that core service is. And so when it comes to the administration, this is just a very high-level overview of, of what it is that the administration department provides. It's, it's primarily the central management of the organization. It includes our finance department, so we have a full-time finance director. And as you know, we have a outsourced support contract with La La Bock and Amen for other financial services. We have a human resources function. We have our communications, which includes our cable studio, management of our social media and websites. This includes the operation of our senior center, which is downstairs in this village hall. And then also includes the management of many of our special events and community engagement, whether it's Vernon Hills Days, our military banner program. And then something that shouldn't be overlooked is management of all of our village records. So whether it's all the ordinances and resolutions we pass, paper files related to payroll, employment records, all of those need to be managed and that does take significant amount of resources. Over the current budget year, there's several achievements that we're proud of from the administration department. As you know, a few months ago, we launched our new service request platform. This allowed residents in our community to submit requests for service online via smartphone, a tablet, or their PC. a tablet, or their PC. We also launched the new redesign of the village website to make the, the website more user-friendly and to help streamline some of the content. There's a bunch of other highlights, I won't go into all these by detail. You've also seen enhancements to our financial reporting, the incorporation of quarterly reports for cash, investments. We had our investment portfolio policy and a reporting that's coming out. And then, of course, our, our day-to-day just promotion of our businesses, supporting the GLMV, Visit Lake County, so on and so forth. From a budget standpoint for fiscal year 26, this is pretty much what I call a status quo budget. There's not any real significant additions to the administration budget. The two items of note, the main increase, 3% for our personnel, that's about 30, just under $36,000, including cost of living increases and our health and life insurance. The other main increase is related to a 3% increase, or proposed 3% increase to our services contract with Lotterbach and Amon, that's just under about $10,000. Everything else, for the most part, like I said, is, is pretty much unchanged year-to-year. Overall, we're looking at a 2.2% increase, or just under $42,000. Looking forward, we do have some further goals that are related to the administration department and our proposed budget. One project that we're working on currently that we're hoping to have come live in fiscal 26 is the implementation of a new business licensing software. This is currently a very manual process, and we're, we're looking to streamline this, provide our business community with access to an online platform so that they can renew their licensing much easier, and staff can have a better job of auditing and tracking those licenses throughout the year. That also includes the addition of electronic payment options for our customers. Believe it or not, we're still currently here at the village hall only accepting cash or check. We certainly appreciate that in 2025, it's, it's probably time to offer some alternative options. So, our finance team is working with community development on, on getting that in place. We continue, of course, to explore some cost-saving options and stability with our health insurance, which continues to be a rising cost in our personnel expense. We're working administration and PD on the transition to LakeCom, hopefully later this summer in 2026, excuse me, 2025. And then, we're, we're also going to be revisiting our village's purchasing policy to try and streamline some of our processes and procedures for that. Since I have the clicker, I'm going to jump to the end of the budget to just quickly talk about our events. Again, a, a pretty overall stable budget year-to-year. Some of the main increases that I'll highlight, for Vernon Hills Days, it's going up about just under $18,000. There's three main categories that are driving those increases. We had a slight increase to our entertainment budget of about $5,000 to recruit some, some different talent for this year. We've also seen some increases to some of our recurring contracts for tent rentals and trailer rentals, which we've incorporated. And then, we are also trying to find a better kind of annual average to estimate what our carnival sales and our beverage sales will be. So, those are driving those cost increases. We do also have a $4,800 increase proposed for the Arbor Theater concerts. Similar to what we've been experiencing with Vernon Hills Days, we found that the price of bands has been going up, and so, in order for us to recruit bands and, and talent that's marketable for our event, we did have to increase the budget for that, to, to pay our bands a little bit more money. And then, lastly, we do have a placeholder in our holiday lighting event. As you know, we, we moved to a new location in, in 2024. We learned a lot from that. Our, our tree might need to be replaced, so we left a, I think it was about a $10,000 placeholder in there in case we need to make any, any improvements or enhancements to that event. Staff will be working over the next few months with the Park District on coming up with some, some kind of longer-term planning on how we can approach that event in, in the future. But overall, we're looking at about a $37,000 increase for all of the events, which is about 8.5% year-over-year, to, to something similar to what Tom said earlier. You know, we do attract inflation. I, I believe our budget last year overall was about a 2.2% increase, so we're kind of seeing the results of the inflation now. We didn't really absorb it into our budget in the last two years. So, we're kind of a little bit delayed in, in having that be realized in our numbers. So, that's part of what's, part of what's driving this increase for fiscal 26. And then, just a sneak peek of our special events lineup for 2025. We, we, of course, begin the, the summer with our pageant on the 21st. We have our Arbor Theater concerts that run from June through August, the James Higher Fishing Derby on the 22nd, Fourth of July fireworks and parade, Vernon Hills Days that we've talked about before, which will be July 17th through the 20th, our Police National Night Out on August 5th. We do support the Park District Little Bear Rib Fest with a donation, I think, believe that's about $12,000. And then, I mentioned our holiday lighting event at the end of November. So, if there's no questions, I'll be happy to turn things over to Director Venata to talk about our public works and our fleet and buildings and grounds.
All right, thanks, Kevin. Similar to the, the statements that Kevin made about the administration department, with, same, same thing goes with the public works. The financial overview is very similar to last year's. We're not, we're, we're basically, pretty much a status quo, like, like you mentioned. You can see the big, the bigger numbers have to do with the personnel increases, as well as the capital contributions that, that Tom touched on, but with, when you take those out of the equation for our, our main services, we're actually seeing a decrease. You can see the big line, I'm in the center of the Streets Maintenance Services. A lot of that is due to some rebalancing of items that were in the Public Works Fund or the Public Works Department that are getting moved to the Buildings and Grounds Department, as well as some items that actually got moved to the Capital Fund, things that we were including in Public Works budget, which we really found were more appropriate to, to be held in some of our preventative maintenance in the Capital Fund, and I'll, and I'll touch on that a little later. As far as our, our fleet maintenance goes, it's really the same story here. You're seeing some of the increases are, are due to items that are moved from our public works over to the fleet maintenance. These are some, just as we, we revise some of these account numbers, we're getting better at aligning line items in, in the best department where they see fit. There's also some, some slight commodity increases that we're seeing from the, the fleet department. And last one is our, our Buildings and Grounds, and you can see, this has actually gone down slightly for our, our maintenance and service accounts. The big increase is, is the capital contributions that, that Tom touched on that are actually being put into the, the different facilities, making the contributions to the Capital Fund rather than the transfers. So, with that, I thought I'd take this opportunity to just briefly go through the, just, just touch on the core services of what the Public Works Department provides, since we're seeing a, a pretty status quo, similar to in past years. Thought it'd take a few minutes to just touch on our different departments, our divisions. So, we have the Streetlights and Building Division. We maintain around 2,152 streetlights in the village. We also oversee all of our village facilities, and we've had some really good success with the new service request system that we put in, and this department has been seeing the, the heavy bulk of those, a lot of streetlight notices, a lot of village facility items. So, they're, they're sort of going through about 50 requests per month, new, using the new service request system. Then we have our Forestry Division. They maintain around 12,000 trees in the village. That includes overseeing maintenance contracts for, for annual trimming, as well as doing a lot of in-house work. We try to trim every single tree in the village every four to five years, so stay on that rotation to promote the health of our, our urban canopy. They also support stewardship of our open spaces, and this division also manages the Vernon Hills Athletic Complex grounds, so setting up all those fields, managing the maintenance contracts, as well as the, doing the work in-house.
Yeah, and again, this past year, you guys did an amazing job after that windstorm that went through, and.
And, and, we, we had, it was all hands-on deck for that. So, the entire Public Works Department, not just the forestry, and, and even with that, we had the Village of Libertyville helped us out, as well as the Vernon Township, so that was really a group effort.
Yeah.
The other division is our Streets and Grounds, so we maintain 165 lane miles of village roadway. This doesn't include 60, 45, or any of the state or county. These are just our, our streets to maintain. Also, about 40 miles of storm sewer and 108 miles of sidewalks. These, this crew also oversees our facility and right-of-way, the grounds within those, so all of our landscaping and mowing contracts at our different buildings. We have our Engineering Division. We're, we're managing right now around a $4 million capital program, so this includes all of the construction, as well as the consultant contracts. And we also work very closely with the Community Development Department to review permitting for site plans, as well as utility permits and right-of-way permits. And our last division is our Fleet Division, which they oversee the maintenance, repair, and replacement of over 100 vehicles and pieces of equipment within the village. And then, as a whole, these are the things that a lot of you already know, but we, you know, support all the village events. We're out there for snow and ice control, which is, you know, half of the year, a major component of, of what we do, and then on-call emergency response. We always have a, a publicly, Public Works duty man available 24/7 to respond to any incident in the village. And with that, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, unless we'll pass them over to the Police Department.
Thank you. I don't have as many pretty pictures as, as Director Venata, but we got cool stuff, too. They're just not as big of the toys that they have. So, I wanted to share, like, like you've heard in many ways, we, we are also largely proposing a status quo budget with a couple modifications that we want to call out tonight for your consideration. To highlight the Police Department, everyone knows those traditional things that every police department has to do. The Vernon Hills Police Department responds to about 25,000 calls for service a year. About 1,000 of those involve criminal reports, crimes reported to us, and we also make about 500 arrests. So, those, those are that kind of law and order, public safety type things, but this chart here, this, this slide highlights all the other categories of events that our, our men and women participate in on, on a regular basis. The proposed budget maintains all those services with about four areas that I want to call out, and you'll see it on the next slide, how these impact the budget. The first and foremost is, we've all been touched by inflation in the last several years, and this is probably no more noticeable than in what we're paying for police vehicles. So, we buy a specially-designed vehicle to start with, but then we have to put a fair amount of upfitting into that vehicle to make it ready for use. And, and just as early as 2021, that was costing us about $48,000 between the vehicle and the upfitting. This year, it's going to be more like $75,000 for every vehicle that we have to budget. So, a very significant increase there, and you'll see that. We've also proposed budgeting for enhancements to our body-worn camera system that improves our police report writing. We have more to say about that, however, we are undergoing a pilot of that system right now, and our subject matter expert isn't available tonight. So, if, what I'm asking for is consideration to include that funding in the budget, that's about a $53,000 chunk of the budget, but with your, with my assurances that we are not going to seek purchasing that system and, before we come back before this board, provide a demonstration and a, a presentation about that system, and then give you consideration of whether or not we actually go forward in contracting for that. I anticipate that would be sometime early summer before we could do that. And then, you've heard about and well-aware of our transition to LakeCom dispatch services. Instead of running our own dispatch, we are fully committed to that. We are, you know, kind of at the finish line of five years of hard work to make that a reality, and as a result, our LakeCom expenses are actually going to be included in the Police Department budget as a fee now, instead of a separate dispatch fund. So, you're going to see both sides of that change. And then, we're going to talk to you tonight about a request for one new position in the police budget. So, this is the breakdown of the, of the proposed $15,230,000 police budget. You'll see here, this stair chart highlights where those changes are. Again, we're going to talk about the 131,000 for a new position net, net expense here shortly. The LakeCom, again, is, this is $680,000, which is our fee, member fee contribution to LakeCom, but it's offset by a reduction in the dispatch fund, which you'll see shortly here. And then, the capital contribution, again, this is largely made up of what we're paying into the VERF, what we're contributing to the VERF out of the police budget in order to be able to buy, continue to buy vehicles that we replace. We, we programmed to replace four vehicles in the FY '26 budget, and then, that $101,000 includes a number of changes, but involved in that is that $53,000 that I mentioned about the report-writing body-worn camera system. Here's the dispatch fund, so this is the reverse of that, and because we won't be ready to make a transition on May 1, but more likely sometime in July, perhaps August, we're taking the prudent approach here of budgeting about six months or half of a fiscal year for the dispatch fund. So, that's, that's why you're seeing this reduction of 67%. There are additional things that we're moving from a dispatch fund expenditure into the police budget, again, making up some of those increases you see, but by next year, this fund will actually be eliminated, and everything will be into the Police Department budget.
So, it looks like we're saving around 200, 250,000 a year?
It, that's, that's probably a fair assessment. I think it, it might be even a little better, depending on when we switch, but cer- certainly it'll be less expensive than continuing to run our own operation. And, and just because you asked that question, I can't answer it without highlighting that wasn't the motivation for us making this move. This, this movement toward LakeCom is, is really driven by public safety for the community. And then, there are a number of other funds within the Police Department purview that are restricted funds. These are forfeiture dollars that come in and have limits on how they can be spent. They're not big accounts, however, we are transferring from these funds in order to offset the purchase of a vehicle this year. We're allowed to do that. And any other time during the year when we seek to expend these funds, we do come to the village board with an ordinance, regardless of the amount, even if it's, if it's within the village manager's purchasing authority, to, to secure your authority to spend these dollars. And now, I'm going to turn it over and introduce Deputy Chief Halybets, who you all are familiar with, and he's going to talk to you about our request for one new position within the Police Department.
Well, thank you, Chief, and thank you to the members of the board and senior staff for hearing us out tonight. As the chief mentioned, a significant request for the budget being considered this evening is a full-time village-employed social worker to be detailed to the Police Department. Currently, police social services are delivered via a part-time contract with Omni Youth Services. Under this model, we receive 24-hour emergency social service support, as well as what our social worker estimates to be 10 to 12 hours of his time weekly. These hours, however, tend to be evening-only, as our contract social worker holds a full-time counseling position with another public entity. For reference, the annual cost of this contract currently stands at $39,500. Using data supplied by our contract social worker, you can see average year-over-year growth in the function's caseload indicated on the chart you have in front of you now. These numbers largely reflect individual interventions initiated by the social worker, which could come from both staff referrals and proactive outreach. These numbers demonstrate that, on average, the contract social services function is presently handling more cases than it has previously. Moving on now, we see that the current model is failing to meet some of the department's basic expectations. If there are two typical cases for proactive social service intervention, they are domestic situations and mental health crisis cases. Using department records, including those filed by our contract social worker, we see that the 2023 social service intervention rate for domestics was approximately 34%, while the intervention rate for mental health crises was only about 11%. In fairness, there is some nuance to these numbers relating to accounting, but we remain confident the function could be substantially improved by the addition of a full-time social worker. Essentially, the historically-high caseload coupled with the low intervention rate suggests the. coupled with the low intervention rate, suggests the function in its current form may be overwhelmed. This comes as only two residents proactively contacted the department last year seeking social services. This suggests there is currently insufficient public awareness of the resource and calls into question the current program's ability to handle additional cases if we were to advertise it in a more aggressive manner. Looking solely at raw numbers for domestic situations and mental health crisis cases, there were 381 opportunities for social service intervention in 2023. That number certainly increases when we add other causes for intervention, including substance abuse and housing instability. For reference, in the same year of 2023, our contract social services initiated only 127 cases. Given these challenges, we are seeking approval to hire a full-time village-employed social worker, which we believe will enhance services in a number of ways. First, improved client identification will come via regular interaction with the department's staff. Patrol officers and investigators are most likely to appreciate the need for social service intervention, and their regular interaction with an in-house social worker is expected only to increase rates of proactive social service outreach. Regrettably, much of our current staff does not have a relationship with our current social worker. Building and maintaining staff relationships is a basic expectation of the social worker in the model proposed. We also believe improved engagement will come via the full-time social worker's enhanced hours and availability to the public. Next, the full-time social worker will have necessary capacity to engage in community outreach initiatives. These include participation in community events, as well as the targeted advertising of the function to vulnerable populations. As I mentioned earlier, only two residents in 2024 had enough awareness of our current program to request assistance. We firmly believe the function will have a measurable impact on both community wellness and department function if effectively advertised and implemented. The full-time social worker will also have the capacity to engage in wraparound and case management services. Commonly available resources, including hospitalization, are designed only to get a person through a time of crisis. We believe a full-time social worker could offer continued support to persons in need as they seek out definitive care. Next, the full-time social worker will also aid in reducing the village's risk profile as it relates to police intervention and mental health crises. Through the social worker's efforts to identify persons in need and intervene prior to a crisis state being reached, police personnel are less likely to get involved in these noncriminal matters, which can involve resistance and the eventual application of force by staff. These incidents have led to multiple officer injuries over the years and continue to be a source of civil liability concern for the village. The full-time social worker also assists us by helping to achieve improved legal compliance for the village. Illinois's Community Emergency Services and Supports Act, which you may hear me refer to as CESA, requires that mental and behavioral health calls to police departments be handled by mental health professionals as opposed to sworn officers. This law has not yet gone into effect as the infrastructure necessary to support the initiative doesn't presently exist. We remain confident, however, the goal of this law, to reduce police involvement in mental health cases, will persist. Notably for our purposes, a full-time village-employed social worker is envisioned as engaging in co-response to active mental health crises Next, the addition of a full-time social worker will lead to increased productivity of sworn staff. Department records indicate our officers currently spend 60 minutes on average assigned to each mental health crisis case. Given each of these incidents require the presence of multiple officers, preventing or deflecting even a modest number of incidents per month means numerous man-hours can be redirected toward crime prevention and community outreach initiatives. The full-time social worker can also provide improved mental health and wellness training for sworn staff. Presently, such training is delivered via computerized modules or at remote sites requiring officers to be reassigned from their daily duties. A well-qualified, full-time social worker could deliver much of this training to staff in a truly interactive fashion without lost productivity. Next, effective use of the full-time social worker has the potential to deflect residents from involvement in the criminal justice system. By reducing the number of sworn officer responses to mental health crises and effectively training staff to deal with mental health concerns, the department expects to find itself in fewer enforcement encounters with persons in crisis. Last, and something not highlighted on the present slide, a full-time village-employed social worker would truly be a village asset. Presently, Omni regards its contract as only being with the police department. While we have received limited assistance when requests originate from other village departments, we have also seen those requests decline under the present model. I can assure you that if there is need for social service assistance originating from any village department or for any village employee, it would be addressed under the proposed model. When accounting for the elimination of the part-time Omni contract, which would come with the implementation of this program, the budgetary impact of this request is approximately $131,000. With that, we'd be happy to hear any questions you may have.
What's the name of the Lake County program that was... You know what I'm talking about?
There's a couple. We are actually one of the original members of a program called Coast, and we still, we dedicate two months out of the year, an officer for the entire month to help make that happen. I sit on that board, and I can tell you, it's just not meeting our needs. We were hopeful. It's in its fourth year now. We were hopeful that we'd get more assistance from it, but they've really struggled to find clinicians to serve it. So many times, it's only being served by sworn police officers.
So I just want to ask, I'm going to ask a few questions, and I'll be done. So you... Currently, Omni provides just for in-house support for police officers? Or what do you... I think it was like $39,000 or something that...
Yeah, $39,500 addresses the mental health concerns, the social service support concerns of the community. So our officers go out, interact with somebody, recognize they could benefit from assistance of our social services department. They file a referral with our social worker, or our social worker engages in proactive review of case reports. He works with our records division to identify residents who could benefit from some proactive intervention.
So directly for the residents on that front. So when you have, but what are the officers... Is this proposal also to be for the officers to utilize during, you know, maybe they have a need?
We have...
We talked about that in the past offline.
Sure. We've engaged with other outside entities, you know, clinical practices to typically provide those services. This social worker certainly would be available to assist if officers felt comfortable. We do find, though, that sometimes, you know, officers don't want to go to a fellow employee with their issues. Would like to send them to outside clinicians.
Right, and I'm almost done. Appreciate the answering. So this would just be a single full-time employee. You're talking about 25% coverage throughout the year. How do you address the other 70... Like, how do you, if you have a call in the middle of the night that's going to need... I mean, how do you foresee this plan? Like, maybe the best answer is, best question is, what does success look like for this position?
Listen, in ideal world, we'd have a full-time co-response model with a social worker available to go 24/7, but there's not that much demand for it, right? That would be great, but there'd be, I shouldn't say what I was going to say, because I was going to tease my fellow public first responders. But that's why, through our partnership with other agencies and the sheriff's office, a model like Coast, we were hoping would make a lot of sense. But you can do a lot with one full-time employee that officers build a relationship with, build trust with, know they can leave referrals to, and that social worker knows how to follow up with them, too, and sees them at roll call, and comes in and says, hey, I've reached out to that family. One of the things that Shannon mentioned is, we have a, there is a number of people in the community that have ongoing, chronic needs for assistance. And either we're not able to meet them, or frankly, they get tired of talking to police, and they just shut us down. So we really think by having someone able to dedicate to solve some of those problems, we're going to cut down on that repeated nature of those, some of those chronic needs. Earlier in my career, I worked in a department that had a full-time social worker, so I know exactly that kind of relationship that builds. Some of the things that we have to do as far as placing children or dealing with family and children problems, they really come in handy doing things like death notifications, which we have to do on a regular basis, to have a clinician with that police officer. The police officer is able to maybe break the ice, make sure things are stable, but now you have a mental health professional there to really provide that kind of service.
Thank you.
Okay, so I just want to say 100% behind your concept here. I guess, a social worker versus a clinical psychologist, is there a difference here? Or would it be beneficial to have a clinical psychologist versus a social worker? That's sort of a broad base.
Our goal, as we conceive of this program now, is to provide limited clinical assistance to our residents. Sometimes you have, you interact with a person who needs to get in with a mental health clinician.
Of course.
But, you know, there may be a wait of a month, two months. That's unfortunately the state of where we are. So we do envision a social worker being able to provide some limited one-on-one counseling, but certainly the goal is not to enter into the long-term care.
Sure.
Business here, just scaffolding them to that result.
Okay.
But to be clear, this person would be a licensed clinician.
Of course, yeah.
This position is a licensed.
I think it's great. I think it's a great idea. We absolutely should definitely pursue this.
Thank you.
No question.
Yeah, when we had it in the past, it actually was a serious plus. And it was dropped not because, not because it wasn't something that was working and not because it was something we didn't need. It was just, it happened when we had our biggest budget crunch, and it was one of the things that we wound up having to cut out of necessity. I agree with Trustee Takaka. And, you know, being in a school situation, a clinical social worker, licensed social worker is a really good asset, especially for, you know, the critical moments as opposed to the clinician you're talking about that would see you on a recurring basis.
Right.
This is more of a moment-to-moment.
There are triage, there are good referral.
Yes, yes.
And importantly, they're that resource, so an officer knows they're doing something. We keep going back to this house. We keep hearing from the same people, we need someone that is going to follow up and make sure that they're getting the services they need.
Yeah, I see the real benefit of this, again, being the case management and the wraparound services. All too often, somebody will be transported to the hospital, they'll be held for a matter of hours, maybe up to a few days. They're discharged with the instruction, okay, go ahead and seek out a more permanent solution. Who can we assign to them that will help them to that goal? You do need somebody who has the capacity to stay on them and ensure their questions are being answered and can be a trusted advocate, and that's what we really see from our social worker.
Yeah, and that's important in today's society. Police officers, like a lot of other jobs, are now having to wear too many hats, and this would be one of them we could help them not have to wear.
And with that, if there's no other questions for the police department, I think we can turn it over to community development.
One quick response. We're very fortunate as a village that we can afford to bring this on, and we're very confident, I know I'm very confident, of our police department to manage it well and find success with it. So 100% behind it, because it's been in need for a long time, just in all parts of our community, and I think I can really foresee this, working with our SROs, too, and all having that open communication and having that person being whoever the social worker may be, be the tip of the spear on all of that. So that'd be very good. So thank you.
Yeah.
So I just want to make sure we're capturing for the, when we prepare the final budget. It sounds like there is general consensus about moving forward with budgeting for the social worker position. The other request was for budgeting for the new Axon technology. We didn't really discuss that. I don't know, Chief, did you want to give more background on that? Or, I mean, as a placeholder, again, as the chief mentioned, there would, we'd be coming back to the board before we actually make the purchase, but it's a question of...
Yeah, no, that's fine, because you said you were going to...
Yeah.
It's a placeholder, and before we make a final decision, you'll bring in more.
Absolutely. We have a presentation for you. We'll go through the details of that. We're asking for it to be included in the budget, so if you approve that contract, then we've got the money.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
So I guess, before I get started with community development, I just want to say a big thanks to Director Lyons for all of the hard work behind the scenes on this. It's a ton of work for probably 11 and 1/2 months to get to this point, so I really appreciate it. It makes the framework of this presentation a lot easier to just kind of insert our little piece into, so thank you for that. Community development, sort of starting with the bottom line first. We are proposing a slight increase over the last fiscal year. The majority of that is related to the conversion of a part-time position to a full-time position. I'll explain some of the details of that in just a few slides here, but the other, as the other departments have mentioned, the VERF contribution does account for the additional increase beyond what I'm requesting for the conversion of the part-time position to a full-time position. Just a little bit of a short review of our revenue. The large projects that we have in towns account for...
Sorry, sorry to interrupt you.
I have a question.
Say again.
There. Here's a question.
Yeah.
Are we okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. This is going back to all social worker issues that we just looked at, okay? We had a social worker for quite a few years. Yet we ought to look at why he had to be elected. Chief, you ought to look at that.
Yes, sir. We're familiar with how that program transitioned to a contract service at the time. I think Trustee Cook mentioned that, at the time that individual left employment, it was during a significant recession downturn, and there was efforts to reduce expenditures in the budget. And the feeling was, at the time, we could meet core needs with the contract service. What we've seen, however, over the last 10 years, is that the needs in the community have only increased, and they've outpaced the ability of the contract option to meet
Okay. I just brought it up. Trustee Cook knows what I'm talking about.
Yep.
Okay. Let's just bat the eyes and watch the genius.
So the community development revenue, we do, we've been working for the last couple of years to try to separate out the large projects, so that we're really budgeting on more regular permit revenue, and the large projects are kept in a separate category. So these large projects, which actually span several different revenue accounts, are roughly $295,000 of the FY '25 revenue. It's about 36%. That is below what we had projected when the fiscal year '25 budget was originally approved. And some of that is just because we're giving our best guess as to which projects are going to hit in a certain fiscal year. Sometimes a project might be postponed, and it actually, the revenue for that permit comes in the following year. The fiscal '25, we still do expect a few projects to come in that haven't actually had their permits issued yet. That would be the Kitty Academy site work permit, and then we have two large retail renovation projects. So looking ahead to '26, we have a project from the original projection for '25 that would be carried over. That would be the second mixed-use building at the mall. We have some additional site work at the mall that would also be part of that $911,000, and a couple of new retail buildings that we're projecting. Just as an overview of the total revenue and projecting out, using 10 months, projecting out, extrapolating to the remainder of fiscal '25, we have an estimated... out extrapolating to the remainder of fiscal '25, we have an estimated 1,742 permits and and approximately $823,000 in total permit revenue to be collected. Just highlighting some of the fiscal '25 accomplishments, the domain is 95% occupied. Uh we have retail units occupied at Hawthorne Road now, two larger new construction projects in the business parks, and then a variety of retail projects at long vacant retail units that have been converted. So um moving on, uh total permit revenue for for the for the fiscal year does include a substantial bump from roof and siding projects. Uh we had the the storm event in August that caused a major uptick in roofing permit activity and siding permit activity. Uh that's not something that we would expect to happen again necessarily. Highlighting some of the accomplishments for the department from the year, we've had several code updates, including the conversion certificate program. We've got business licensing requirements, additional require additional changes to that are in the works right now, and we do actually expect to have that occur during this fiscal year. And then the electric vehicle zoning code update, again, participating in the EV readiness program with the mayor's caucus. One thing that kind of goes below the below the radar is our changes to the code enforcement procedures. Uh we've standardized a system now that has a more formal escalation pattern to it, and we've utilized the adjudication hearing process for the the small handful of citations that actually don't get resolved. Uh we do, we do now take a probably a handful, six, seven, eight this year, went all the way to an adjudication hearing. Uh operational accomplishments, we are now accepting digital plan review submittals for technical review and for a limited number of of fire system permits. Uh we've been, as had been mentioned previously, we're collaborating with finance on a centralized business record project, which will be a huge improvement for us to be able to manage business records, not just business licensing, but other types of records as well. Our goals, just a few minor minor requests this year, we have a request, as you see here, for a digital plan review system. Uh we have, we still, despite our efforts to decrease paper, we still have a pretty significant amount of paper flowing through the office. Uh so included in this budget is a digital system, large monitor where we can complete plan reviews digitally, store the comments, and keep, you know, you see on the picture on the right here, you can keep the code references on a smaller monitor in the plans than a bigger monitor. Uh so we're excited to to make this big leap in technology this year. Um the the biggest budget request, though, for the year is the conversion of a part-time code enforcement position to a full-time combination building inspection and code enforcement position. Uh we have seen certainly a demand for proactive enforcement increasing. Uh we have citizen complaints increasing, so just having the capacity to deal with that. Uh we have pro the need for proactive enforcement as our commercial properties age, rather than waiting for a complaint, try to have a regular inspection program. Another component of this would be working with Public Works and the police department on items that overlap with the with the three departments, so that, you know, street-related items, we certainly have an opportunity to do a better job of collaborating, and I would see this position as being a major improvement for improving the function of how the three departments work together. Um we also have, related to this, our two current full-time inspectors spend a pretty good amount of their time doing inspections that I would consider to be a lower-level plan review or an inspection, fence postal inspection, things like that could be assigned to this this position and free up their time utilizing their expertise better.
It the digital plan review, is that something that's starting to become more prevalent, I mean, outside of here? Because my question for saying that is, it's it's it'll be great for you to be able to store everything here and review everything here, but hopefully, it's something that's becoming more prevalent outside too, so that you'll be able to communicate better with the developer and that?
Absolutely. So we're, there are, the the development community is already utilizing the software that we're planning to purchase that goes along with the hardware system. Uh so it's it's becoming certainly more common, being able to communicate with, we have outside review as well with the fire department. We'd be able to share a plan review with both fire protection districts who have already started doing digital plan review themselves. So this is very similar to what Countryside is already using. The building department in Libertyville is using this now, so we are, we are, I think, seeing certainly a lot more of this sort of technology in in building departments.
Okay. Thank you.
I think that was it for me. Yeah, happy happy to answer any other questions that you might have.
I think we should support going to the full-time position and the plan review. It's just gonna make your department more efficient, and that's, you know, it's one of our pillars here is our community development.
Yeah, Libertyville has one, there's not even a need to find.
Thank you. Okay, Kevin, you all set?
All set.
Is there any other questions?
Yeah, so again, just consensus, it sounds, to continue to incorporate those two items in the budget? Okay, thank you.
All right. Uh so continuing on, we're gonna look at a capital fund here. Uh in conjunction with capital fund, we're gonna review the motor fuel tax revenues, because now as we utilize the motor fuel tax receipts, it basically funds the road rehab program in the capital fund. So we're gonna review these together. So first, we'll look at the motor fuel tax revenues. Again, as I said, these funds, these restricted funds receipts are accumulated in the MFT fund and then transferred into the capital fund each year to fund the road rehab program. Uh if you look at the top two lines here, these are the main two taxes in in Illinois that's collected by the state, that again, these are dispersed to municipalities as well as other transportation agencies on a per capita basis. At the bottom of the table, I have some per gallon tax rates for the MFT as well as the TRF tax, and then the amount per capita we project in fiscal '25, as well as the budget amount. So that covers the top two lines there.
Any particular reason you're seeing a potential drop in the motor fuel tax in that, or just?
Um so the these are per capita estimates, again, developed by Illinois Municipal League.
Okay.
And they they do have big write-ups, but it's it's not always as simple as, oh, we expect less usage and all this kind of stuff. It there the the state takes this tax in at the high level, and then certain percentages are sent to Illinois Department of Transportation, certain are sent to counties, and and so on so forth. So it's not a clean breakdown from that standpoint. So it is more complicated than just seeing use of of gas.
Maybe to your point, trustee Cook, there is one thing that we're obviously continuing to monitor, but as electric vehicles become more popular, they're obviously not filling up gas, and so the percentage of vehicles on the road being electric is increasing, and therefore, I think, long-term, the state is also looking at MFT as a as a long-term long-term funding source, so we're continuing to monitor that, as Tom mentioned, in support with the Illinois Municipal League, so.
And the transportation renewal fund tax was the additional tax added in 2019. That can also increase with CPI over time. That's why that one's, they started out the same rate, 19 cents per gallon, so that one's already up to 28 cents. So moving down the the line here, the grant revenue in the the middle of this slide, really $500,000 projected in fiscal '25, as well as another $500,000 DCO grant is projected in the next budget year. Now, these two grants were related to the Lakeview Parkway expansion program, so we've already incurred all the expense to these. Now, we're just going through the paperwork and and need to be invoiced by IDOT, et cetera, before we can get reimbursed. Bottom line here, that says general fund, that should say motor fuel tax fund. Uh the the fund for the year, budgeted at $1.8 million, an increase of 44% or $559,000 over the prior year budget, and again, that's due to the grant revenue changes mostly. So moving on to, and we're not going on through expenses, because there's no expenditures budgeted for the MFT, it's basically just a transfer out into the capital fund, which we're gonna talk about now, to fund that road program. So how do we fund the capital projects? Again, we have, we're gonna go right to the far column here, draft budget 2026. There's two different categories of funding for capital projects. We have direct revenues, which is the top section here, and the budget includes $2.5 million in direct revenues. Of that $2.5 million, we have a grant set aside or a grant funding for the CV ditch project that's upcoming, and let's see, the second section of funding for the capital projects is really just other financing sources, so these are transfers in from the general fund, as well as the motor fuel taxes that I just mentioned. So that equates to about 3.5 million. So for the year, just under $6 million of inflows into the capital fund to fund these projects.
Turflown, turflown situation.
Uh here's a summary look at the expenditures by category. Again, if we go to the far right column, fiscal '26 budget, we have the streets and roads, and that not only includes the rehab program every year, but sidewalk program, various other things that relate to the the large maintenance and construction projects in that category. Village facilities, this is funded by those contributions from the Buildings and Grounds Department, open spaces and storm stormwater projects. This is where the expense side of that CV ditch project is included, among others here. So all these projects are itemized out in the draft budget on page 116 through 119 for your reference. We're not gonna go through line by line, but I do want to cover, since we transferred a large portion last year into the capital fund, I just want to cover the fund balance rundown here. So if we start in the middle of the page, we expect the budget year to end at $11.5 million fund balance in the capital fund, and this provides, this fund balance provides us funding of just under four years for projects that are funded through all sources, and in greater than five years of coverage for projects that are funded just through general fund sources. Uh and again, our target balance for our policy is around three years of funding. Uh now, I just want to turn it over to Director Venata here, just to cover some changes since the CIP presentation.
Yeah, so I I didn't want to, we weren't gonna go through the entire project list. We did that in December, but I did want to highlight some some projects that we didn't discuss back in December that are new additions, that are again, that are in the budget that you've seen. Uh so the first one, the intersection safety improvements, we currently have a consultant, Civil Tech, that is evaluating intersections at Fairway and Nike, Fairway and Cougar, and as well as Aspen at Hawthorne South. Uh we've talked a couple of times about that project. Um I'm hoping to come before the board in the next couple of weeks to to give some results. We still want to meet with the the schools and the police department, but the consultants put the first draft together of some improvement options, as well as a a draft of a a crosswalk policy. Uh so what you're seeing here is a placeholder for any construction work that we would decide to do under that project, if we want to make improvements to these intersections. Uh this would be the the construction funding for that that project or those projects. Uh the next one down here is the storm sewer cleaning and repair. I I briefly mentioned during my Public Works update that there were some decreases to the Public Works account. This this was the big one. Uh we used to carry this in our operational budget in Public Works. It's more appropriate in a, we felt that it was more appropriate in the preventative maintenance section of our capital program, so we moved that here. I also wanted to touch on the the police campus improvements. As you all know, there was a a presentation that our consultant did about the space needs study for the for the police campus. They're gonna be, the plan is to come back in the next couple of months to give the the final presentation to that, the second half of that program, but we wanted to include a placeholder, again, in the next fiscal year, if the board wishes to continue with any of the concepts that comes out of that, there's additional funding, so that process could could continue on with some architectural consulting services. Uh and the last one I wanted to note, which actually isn't in the the draft that you received, but this will be in addition to the final budget, as I discussed, I think I brought this before the board, before IDOT is gonna be improving the intersection at CDW in Milwaukee, and they, so we just recently got an update on that, that plans are going out for for bid in the next couple of weeks here, but as part of the funding agreement, since two of the legs of the intersection are village-owned, I believe their their cost estimate for this project is around $700,000. The village's share of that for our legs of the intersection, as well as the the EVP, the emergency vehicle preemption, which is all, has to always be funded by the local municipality, would be $45,000, so that's gonna be an additional capital line in for that project. So these are the updates since since the last time we discussed in December.
Who's on tap this year for residential street paving with neighborhoods like you did?
Oh, um so the the locations, we're gonna continue where we left off, some remaining areas in Greg's Landing on Greg's Parkway, but the majority of the road program is gonna be in Centennial Crossing this year.
I like that.
Go back.
Any any other capital fund questions? All right.
You're almost there.
All right, moving on to the VERF fund. So again, how how are we funding the the equipment and vehicle replacements? We also have direct revenues here, just like capital, but this is just basically interest and investment income on the balances that are in the fund. Otherwise, mostly 100 or funded 100% from the general fund departments, as well as an occasional transfer in from the DUI fund for patrol vehicles. Uh so the total funding coming into the VERF fund is $1.2 million for the budget year. Now, the VERF includes two main replacement categories, fleet replacement, which typically includes the drivable vehicles, and equipment replacement, which typically includes equipment used in operations with a cost greater than $10,000. Uh this is just to summarize the vehicles to be purchased under the fiscal '26 budget, two trucks in Public Works, as well as four patrol vehicles in the PD. Again, the all all the purchases are itemized out on page 123 of your draft budgets. And then looking at the equipment replacement plan, rather than listing them all out here, again, this this schedule is included in your draft budget on page 124 and complete. Uh the types of operating equipment we purchase in the VERF include the copiers, employee computer replacements, IT infrastructure, among other items, but that's substantially it for the VERF fund. Oh, one more thing, just want to cover the fund balance. Uh again, with the transfer, we anticipate ending the year with a fund balance in the VERF fund of $3.5 million, and that is enough balance to cover just under three years of vehicle and equipment replacements. Okay, moving on, gonna take a look at Metro Fund now. So a quick facts breakdown here, nothing has changed since last year, we still have the main lot with the overflow lot. Daily parking fee is $1.75, and the monthly prepaid parking permit is $55 for the two-month access. Same train schedule with seven inbound and outbound trains during the weekdays and no weekend service. Here's a couple of charts I just want to share that plots the activity out pretty well. On the left side of this table, or left side of the chart here, we have daily parking spaces sold over the months, and if we look at the black line at the top, that's kind of our watermark for pre-COVID activity. And then the orange, green, and blue line. And then the orange, green, and blue lines, in that order, go from 2022 to 2024. So we saw a nice increase each year since COVID. However, the first nine months or so in 2025 seems to plateau a little bit. When we look at the graph on the right, this just shows basically the most popular days, most spaces are sold, percentage of spaces sold per day. Okay, and just looking at the financials here on the far right column, we're projecting $36,000 in revenue. Really, it's pretty flat year over year there. As you see, the spaces did not increase like they have over the past few years. Operating costs of around $100,000 before depreciation, operating loss with depreciation, negative $160,000. Now, if we want, so the depreciation covers the building of the lot and the building, and over time, we're costing that out. And the target right now is to subsidize this fund with the general fund transfer to be cash positive in operations, not necessarily to build balances for future capital. So that target is around $65,000, $70,000 a year from the general fund to keep this ongoing cash positive. Now, when a big roof needs replacement or rehab to the building needs to happen, that's a future discussion that we're working on how we can map that out and better facilitate those, just the questions, I guess. So the net position at year-end is planning to be at $631,000.
If I could just add a little bit to the Metro discussion, we have a parking agreement with Metra for the overflow parking lot. That agreement does expire, I believe, next year in 2026. Metra has been proactively reaching out to communities regarding, obviously, the decline in parking at their lots all throughout their system and is engaging with communities on interest one, in renewing those agreements, and two, what opportunities there would be for redevelopment in those parcels. So I just wanted to throw that out there, that there's potential down the road that we might not need that overflow lot, which could, to Director Lyons' point, reduce that future capital need. But, you know, we're working with Metra on what that looks like.
So it could eventually become pickleball court.
Outdoor-laded pickleball courts and low green space.
Yeah.
Now, does, if I recall, Metra required a certain amount of parking spots to maintain the station.
Correct.
Would we be in jeopardy of that? Is that, or is that something that's?
It sounds as though they're receptive to.
If we like the anti or the extra.
If we were to retain the lot to the west, you know, the original lot, and forego the overflow lot, we would still have sufficient parking based on our current, our current usage.
We would have to have some, if there's a possibility where those numbers, where they're gonna have to increase the number of spaces, we would wanna protect ourselves for future.
Yeah, we'd wanna make sure that we didn't overcommit to the overflow lot and then find a point in time where we now need those spaces, but.
Outdoor-laded pickleball courts.
All right, moving on to TIF funds. Homestretch. All right, I'm starting with the Vernon Hills Town Center TIF, number one, just going over some quick facts. This is the TIF, the oldest TIF we have currently active, started in 2002 with a frozen EAV base of just over $2 million. The estimated EAV for 2025 is $28.3 million. Current outstanding debt as of 5/1/25 is just over $3 million. And again, the last TIF levy tax year for this TIF is 2025, so this upcoming December, which means the first tax year, the taxing districts can include the TIFI EAV on their levies, would be the 2026 levy. All right, just jumping through the revenues and expenditures here, if we look in the far right budget column, the fund's expecting $2.9 million in revenues, and again, the local taxes is the TIF increment. We have the next line down, $247,000. This is the pilot or pay in lieu of taxes from the general fund of the village, 10%, as well as the investment income on the balance. Plan expenditures of $1.6 million, of which just about all of that is the current debt service payment on that debt, two payments left of principal. Projected to end the, or end of the year with a fund balance of $6.3 million. Again, this graphic just shows if the TIF were to close today, what the tax generation would be for the taxing bodies included in the TIF. And any questions on TIF 1? Okay, moving to Melody Farm TIF. Just to recap, this TIF started in 2017 with a frozen EAV of $290,000. Estimated 2025 EAV is $51.1 million. Current outstanding debt, TIF debt related to this project is $15.3 million. And the projected fiscal year in which we, the accumulated TIF increment is, will be in excess of the debt, the outstanding debt, and that is in this fiscal year. So we anticipate during fiscal '26, our accumulated funds in this TIF fund will exceed the outstanding debt. Now, that's pending any other future assessment refund or public projects identified by the board.
Oh, man.
And just looking at the far right column, again, fiscal '26 budget, revenue is expected of $5.6 million for the year. Expenditures expected just under $1.8 million, and again, $1.6 million of that is debt service. And the ending fund balance, all the way to the bottom right, expected is over $17 million at the end of fiscal '26. And the same chart gives an idea of the tax generation for all the taxing bodies involved in the TIF. Any questions, comments on Melody Farm? Okay, last of our three active TIFs, Hawthorne Mall, again, established in 2020 with a frozen EAV of $33.5 million. Estimated 2025 EAV, around $58 million. There's currently no GO debt issued for these projects, and one sales tax note we have with And this is the most, this is the most active TIF currently with, well, there's a lot of stuff going on in this one, but let's go down to, just look at the revenues. So revenue is expected for the fiscal '26 budget, just over $2.5 million. And expenditures, about 3.1 for the year. Now, the breakdown here, in those expenditures, we have a line for $2.5 million. This includes over $2 million of TIF project reimbursement, which is earmarked for reimbursement to the developer as certain milestones are met as we proceed. So as you can see, in the last budget year, two columns to the left, fiscal '25, we did a similar thing, and we realized about $100,000. So this may, we have it there as a placeholder as these projects get met. Doesn't mean they're gonna be completed in the fiscal year, though. And then the other line there, just under $600,000. This is about, this includes a $560,000 payment to Hawthorne District 73 based on our annual IGA payment in lieu of the student reimbursement under TIF Act, where this pays, we pay 27% of the increment generated by the residential property on the mall property. Ending balance for the year ends just over $1.6 million projected. Any questions on TIFs? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to the last fund of the night, Police Pension Fund. Okay, so again, if we focus your attention on the far right, draft budget fiscal '26, we have contributions coming into the fund of $3.6 million. The village portion of that is just over $3 million for the fiscal '26 year. Total additions to the fund, $8.8 million. Move down to deductions, administration of the fund is just under $50,000. Benefits paid out to active members, duty disabilities, and surviving spouses is included in this line, just over, or $4.2 million. Again, we anticipate a couple retirements during the year, so that number is bumped up a little bit for that. Ending the year with a net position of just under $77 million. And then each year after the audits complete, we do have various stats that I would like to review. The state statutes require municipalities to reach a 90% funding level by 2040. As of the fiscal '24 audit, the most recent percent funded was just over 71%. That's all I have to report there. Any questions on the Police Pension Fund? Hearing none, moving to the next steps then for the budget. Next meeting on March 18th, Kemper will be here to go through the golf course fund. March 31st, just before the public meeting, we'll have our public hearing for the tentative budget. And then April 15th meeting will be consideration of approval for the fiscal '26 budget. I thank you all for your attention, appreciate it, made it. One night.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you, thank you, everyone. You wanna, what do you, what's that for the record? Do you want Saturday meetings or?
I like this.
So Kevin, I don't know if you have any closing remarks or if there's any other comments or information you need?
Again, we're still in the draft budget, so myself and Tom and anyone else from staff are more than happy to sit down if anyone would like to go into further detail, but we do have our schedule in front of you, so just please reach out if you'd like that meeting. I think we're just looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, closed session.
There is no closed session this evening.
Motion to adjourn, committee of the whole.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right, we're adjourned.
Good night.
Yes, sir.
Good night.
Good night, Roger.
Good night, Roger.